Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all matters.
You keep asking me the same question. It's giving me the same question.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
You keep asking me the same question. It's giving me the same question.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacollas.
Here.
Director of Law, Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Craneck.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Trevis.
Here.
Board One Councilman, Biassiata.
Here.
Board Two Councilman, Frondor.
Here.
Board Three Councilman, Kukrow.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties, LeVie. Building Commissioner, Morrow.
Okay, we will begin with the reading and disposal of the journal, the meeting minutes of September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Having read the council minutes of the council meeting dated September thirteenth, I find no errors or omissions, therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
The meeting minutes of September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen have been approved. Now move on to the consent agenda. Councilman Frondor.
If there's no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
I second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
The meeting minutes of September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen have been approved. Now move on to the consent agenda. Councilman Frondor.
If there's no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
I second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed. Are there any resolutions of commendation? We have none tonight. Okay, reports of committees. The Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on September twentieth. Those meeting minutes are forthcoming, and our next meeting will be held on October seventeenth. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petrow.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is October third.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker.
Mr. Chairman, our last meeting was September sixth, and the minutes are on file with the clerk. Our next meeting is October third.
Thank you, Councilman. Police and Safety Committee, Councilman Craneck.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Police, Fire, and Safety Committee will be meeting on October seventeenth. Last meeting minutes will be delivered to the secretary shortly.
Thank you, Councilman. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was on September twentieth, and our next meeting is on October seventeenth, and the meeting minutes are forthcoming.
Thank you, Councilman. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was on September sixth. Meeting minutes are still pending. Our next meeting in the Rules Committee is October third.
Thank you, Councilman. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Frondor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was held on September twentieth. Our next meeting will be held on October third, and I'm happy to report that I am current with my meeting minutes.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any appointments and confirmations this evening? No, Mr. President. Thank you. Communications, Petitions, and Claims.
Yes, I have two items. The first is a letter written by Mayor Delacollas. It's dated September twenty-third, addressed to Michelle Monaco of the Orlando Baking Company. On behalf of the residents of the city of Seven Hills, I'd like to thank you and the Orlando Baking Company for your donation of twelve loaves of quality breads to our food pantry on Tuesday, September twentieth. This cooperative effort was coordinated by our Councilman-at-large Edward Bicker and our Community Relations Director, Tony Terry. It is with continual backing of supportive business community members like Orlando Bakery that the city of Seven Hills Food Pantry can assist our residents who struggle with food insecurity. Please do not hesitate to contact my executive assistant, Kathy Holland, if you have any questions, comments, or suggestions. Sincerely, Mayor Richard Delacollas. I also have a good guy letter from, let's see, the resident is living at nine forty-nine Meview. His name is Ezio Rossit, and he's writing to our service director, "I want to say thanks and compliment you guys on the great job you did fixing East Decker. A few years ago, I thought that road was completely unsalvageable. This latest fix was really nice, and that street is surprisingly good, especially going eastbound. Keep doing those types of techniques. Thanks, Ezio Rossit." And that's all we have tonight.
Thank you. Okay, council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding anything on tonight's agenda, please feel free to step forward to the podium and state your name and address. I do know that there are a lot of people here tonight regarding the two ordinances regarding deer. As mentioned in our previous caucus meeting, both of those ordinance this evening are being tabled and will be taken up at another date. So if there's anybody in the front row that has any comments, second row.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I just wanted to-
I'm sorry, Joe, but you have to state your name and address for our record.
Yes, sir. Joseph Lindway, three oh five one Shady Lane.
Thank you, Joe.
What's the update on the Hemlock sore project? Is there any official update on that?
Our engineer and building and service commissioners are not here. Mayor, do you want to give any input on that?
Well, it's my understanding that we're still in the process of gathering easements for the construction, both permanent and work easements. Perhaps the law director can fill you in on where all that stands at this point. But that's where we are. We need to gather all the easements to begin the work. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I was copied on an email that came through this week that the final plans are done. There were still some permanent easements that were being finalized. As the mayor said, we're continuing to get easements, and we're not getting the project till next spring. So that's what we're going to do for the next however many months is get the easements to be required.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Pignatello. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further in the second row?
Hi, I'm Suzie Lindway, three oh five one Shady Lane, and I have a question. I'm not sure if I'm allowed or not allowed to talk about this. It's my understanding, and this is about the deer, it's my understanding that the acreage for the bow hunting was changed from five to two acres. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. There was a petition that was signed a few weeks ago, and I'm one of the residents that signed it, and I would just like to say that I don't feel very comfortable about that change being made behind all of our backs, basically, and clearly, the other people, hundreds of people from what I understand that signed it, are also not comfortable with it either. I think you're taking a somewhat dangerous situation and even making it worse the closer the acreage, and I hope that all of you who are speaking on behalf of us reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Anybody further in the second row?
Good evening, council. Law Director, Mayor Delacollas, Lucy McKernan, seven five five Hillside Road. I do have a question about that. When is it going to be on the agenda, Mr. Trevis?
We will be discussing it in our caucus meeting next week. I do not know when it will be on the agenda again.
So at a caucus meeting, you can't pass an ordinance, correct?
No, and you know that.
Okay. Also, I don't know if this is, if this is on the agenda or not, I guess I could see some tie-ins to it with this nine eight seven Hillside with Mr. Duganero with the easement, but I do have a question there, and maybe I know the answers to this and maybe I don't, about fireworks that are large scale at arbitrary times. Are those legal?
You're more than welcome to discuss that in the next public comment section. By agenda, I need to keep this portion to legislation only.
All right.
I'm sorry.
And also, is it legal for people to allow their pets to be running at large, having bonfires, off-duty police officers to be harassing other residents?
Lucy, I apologize, but this section is for legislation only. I'm sorry.
These things are disturbing to my peaceful enjoyment of my property.
Lucy, I have to cut you off. This section is for legislation only. There's another section at the end of the meeting where you can make these comments. I just have to go by this agenda. I apologize.
For the record, those are the public nuisances, not the deer.
Thank you. Is there anybody further in the third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, moving on to ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petrow.
I move that council tables ordinance eighty-nine, two thousand sixteen.
Councilman Bicker.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Craneck.
Yes, as Chairman of the Police, Fire, and Safety Committee, I am very much in favor that this ordinance should not be tabled. I understand from council that, I'm kind of alone in this right now, I understand that the reason being, looking at the financial situation, and it's been suggested that depending upon what happens with the income taxes and the ballots coming up in November, that'll have some bearing on this, and from that, I'm going to guess that, what I've been told, that if we don't have the monies for, because we're running in arrears the way we are with the negative spending that we have, that it's not felt that we can justify buying a new police vehicle at this point. I don't necessarily agree with that. I certainly hope that the residents of this city feel that the safety and welfare is important enough that they'll take that into consideration at the time of they cast their votes on the income tax ballots.
Thank you, Councilman. As Councilman Craneck said, this is being tabled because of budgetary issues, and if the income tax levy and the fire levy passes November, this will be one of the first things that this council does. Any further conversation? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
No.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number eighty-nine, two thousand sixteen has been tabled. Moving on to the second reading of ordinance number one oh four, two thousand sixteen.
Ordinance number one oh four, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with State Industrial Products Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the purpose of acquiring a comprehensive water treatment program for the boiler at City Hall for the term of one year, and appropriating an amount not to exceed five hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Ordinance number one oh four, two thousand sixteen has been read for its second reading. We will now have the second reading of ordinance number one oh five, two thousand sixteen.
Ordinance number one oh five, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, and ordinance accepting the consortium bid of Ports Petroleum Company Incorporated of Worcester, Ohio, to be the best consortium bid therefore, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of ultra-low sulfur diesel premium fuel for the period of December eighth, two thousand sixteen, through December seventh, two thousand seventeen, to be used by the service department vehicles, fire department vehicles, and the city hall generator, and authorizing an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for said purchase.
Ordinance number one oh five, two thousand sixteen has been read for its second reading. Moving on to ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Craneck.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen, by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number one oh eight, two thousand sixteen.
Ordinance number one oh four, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with State Industrial Products Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the purpose of acquiring a comprehensive water treatment program for the boiler at City Hall for the term of one year, and appropriating an amount not to exceed five hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Ordinance number one oh four, two thousand sixteen has been read for its second reading. We will now have the second reading of ordinance number one oh five, two thousand sixteen.
Ordinance number one oh five, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, and ordinance accepting the consortium bid of Ports Petroleum Company Incorporated of Worcester, Ohio, to be the best consortium bid therefore, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of ultra-low sulfur diesel premium fuel for the period of December eighth, two thousand sixteen, through December seven, two thousand seventeen, to be used by the service department vehicles, fire department vehicles, and the city hall generator, and authorizing an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for said purchase.
Ordinance number one oh five, two thousand sixteen has been read for its second reading. Moving on to ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Craneck.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen, by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Great Day Tours of Cleveland, Ohio, to provide transportation for a bus trip to Meadowlands, Pennsylvania, September twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, authorizing an amount not to exceed nineteen hundred dollars for said service and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Craneck.
I move that we pass ordinance number one oh seven, two thousand sixteen and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number one oh eight, two thousand sixteen has been tabled. Moving on to ordinance number one oh nine, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we table ordinance one oh nine dash two thousand sixteen.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number one oh nine, two thousand sixteen has been tabled. Moving on to resolution number fifty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution number forty-four, two thousand sixteen, for its first and final reading.
Resolution fifty-four.
Resolution fifty-four, excuse me, for its first and final reading.
I second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-four, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Mayor Delacollas and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, a resolution approving and accepting a temporary utility easement granted to the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, by John C. Gibbons for the installation, construction, and maintenance of utilities, together with all appurtenances, appropriating the sum not to exceed three hundred eighty dollars for the acquisition of said easement, and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number fifty-four, two thousand sixteen has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we adopt resolution number fifty-four, two thousand sixteen.
Second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-four, two thousand sixteen has been adopted. Moving on to resolution number fifty-five, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-sixteen, by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number fifty-five, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Mayor Delacollas and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Craneck, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petrow, a resolution approving and accepting a temporary utility easement granted to the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, by Felix Duganiero, trustee, for the installation, construction, and maintenance of utilities, together with all appurtenances, appropriating the sum not to exceed six hundred eighty dollars for the acquisition of said easement, and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number fifty-five, two thousand sixteen has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we adopt resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-sixteen.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Craneck.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution fifty-five, two thousand sixteen has been adopted. Council will now be open to the audience on any subject matter you wish to discuss. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Is anybody in the first row? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Last call. Okay. Moving on to reports and communications from the mayor and safety director, Mayor Delacollas.
Thank you, Mr. President. No remarks this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from the directors of departments and other officials. Law Director, Richard Pignatello.
I have no report.
Thank you. Council miscellaneous, let's start in the middle this time. Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a comment about what's happening in the school district issue right now. Many of us were at the meeting last evening, which became quite contentious, because frankly, this is a contentious issue of families are having lots of problems. The repurposing plan does greatly affect Seven Hills residents, as Normandy will no longer become a high school if they pass this through, and lots of other changes in the city. I just want to say, my heart goes out to all the families that worked in the Palmer School District, who are losing their jobs and seeing a lot of cuts that are happening. A lot of those people are Seven Hills residents, and my heart also goes out to the families like mine, who are seeing their school system being disrupted for budgetary reasons. So if you're out there, we're thinking of you, and we're doing everything we can to get us through this situation, and Seven Hills will do our best for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Craneck.
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
Nothing.
Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just concur with Councilman Kukrow's concerns about the school board and families and the employees that were impacted. Slightly happier noting, I'd like to invite you all to the Seven Hills Fall Fest. It's this Sunday, noon, at the recreation center. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Councilman. Councilman Petrow.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Frondor.
Nothing this evening.
I have one thing. The engineer emailed earlier today, and he is prepared to advertise for bids for the two thousand sixteen street crack ceiling program and the two thousand sixteen pavement markings program. Just want to put on record that we're going to authorize the clerk of council to place those advertisements in the sun newspaper. Just very briefly on the issues with the school district right now. It's certainly difficult for everybody, but it is a school district issue. There is very little that the city can do, because they are two separate governmental entities. But if there's anything that comes up where we can have input and lobby the school district to help our residents, we certainly will be doing that. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Is there any, no discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata. Yeah. Say that again?
Should we reconsider the ordinance?
Yeah. Right.
We put on a new ordinance. I think we should be putting on the old ordinance. Probably, but this was, it was requested to be done this, you know, so you have to determine what to do. And the reason was, we're waiting, this is all based on waiting for additions to come back. This is just like the outside action. But they have to actually- I know, and I think, I think we should put it on a way, putting back on-
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
This one's changed, I'm here, I clearly asked. Yeah. You guys see what the mayor, you know. Yeah, no, I'll be getting the question, pretty quick, all right, you guys. Okay, you heard. I'll be getting the-
Yeah.
Well, I need your mom and dad, Mayor. That's why I need to come. You better know I'll be calling, probably next week. I know it. I know it. I'm sure. 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 I'm sure.